...for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody sign in, please. Locked up.
That's not working.
Four of our lives is... Try it again.
There's a red light on the bottom of mine.
It's the monitor. That's just the monitor. Yes. Alright, we're good. Everybody sign in. Ms. Fay, hit that button again.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hit confirm.
Mr. Goins, try to sign in, please.
Push the yes button on your...
Press the confirm button. There you go. Alright. Show us the vote, please. And coram. Recognition of guests. Do we have anyone out there like to address the board? If not, welcome everybody. Can I get approval on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Have a second. Any discussion? Cast your vote. Please confirm, Mr. Wallace. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Motion passed. Next item is to approve the regular agenda. We have added, under 7B, we've added 7.1. And under 8, we've added... Excuse me, we've added E, F, and G. So what's the pleasure? Got a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Remind everyone that we're going to recess this night until next Tuesday at 5 o'clock. The Budget Finance Committee approves our... 5 o'clock. Is that good with everybody? So put that on your calendar. The only other thing I have is to remind everyone about the trip to Gatlinburg next weekend, the Law, the TSBA Law Seminar, Summer Law Seminar. Ms. Fay, I'm sure she'll touch that in her comments when we get to the end. That's all I have. Director's monthly report.
Will the meeting be here in the courthouse?
It is, here at the courthouse. I think Mr. Nadifer is going to introduce his staff tonight. Tell us what they're going to be doing.
Many of you already know most of the staff, but Ms. Vicky Headley, you can raise your hand. Thank you. She is Title I Director, and really, Federal Projects is her 99.9% job. Ms. Vicky Woodward does a great job with her school nutrition. And her new eligibility program has paid dividends all year. Ms. Tammy Lay is secondary, I mean, elementary supervisor. Deals a lot with human resources. Works with Ms. Sansan with testing. Ms. Violet Campbell. See, I knew her a long time ago, but anyway. She is, we call her Ms. Sunshine because she is really a special education director and oversees all those programs and many teachers. A new person on board, Mr. Steve Rutherford, raise your hand, please. Steve is taking up a lot of slack in, has Transportation Supervisor, Maintenance, 504, bullying and harassment. We're looking to revamp our online learning systems and credit recovery. And he and Ben Faust and Robbie Heatherly are looking into that. Mr. Heatherly here tonight? Okay, that's fine. We introduced him last time. But anyway, Steve also will work with discipline hearings and attendance issues because many times court dates come up where our other attendance person may be involved in something else. But Mr. Heatherly is our secondary and our CTE Director, Supervisor. And Mr. Johnny Bruce back there is Coordinated School Health and anything that is related to health. Also, our athletics, elementary, middle, and high school. And all of our health plan and our emergency plans, he deals with all those. And many of those things take our after-school activities or functions that he meets with our teachers after hours.
He's also our personal Commissioner from the School Board.
Oh, I got a couple of people way back in the back that's hiding behind Mr. Colmer. Now, Ms. Colmer does, keeps up with all of our secretaries and helps us keep our finances in each school, and she generally turn, she does turn a report in each month. And does a great job. A bit, many times when you have a new person come on or the new laws that come into question dealing with school finances, she helps our secretaries and our bookkeepers keep up with those. Dr. Rita Goins is trying to hide back there, but Dr. Goins takes care of many after-school programs. Adult Education, all of our LEAPs programs, she supervises all those textbooks. And I have a question for you, Dr. Goins, before you leave tonight, so before you run off. We've got a question. And Mr. Jack Cannon, we could not function without him. The Technology Man of the Year in our county. And he does a great job. He has introduced, I told Mr. Cannon back in March, he was wanting to get me a new phone then, and I told him just wait a few days, we'd see what worked out, if I really needed one or not. But he got me a new iPhone, and you're talking about a learning curve. We're on another learning curve because I was getting ready to take a hammer to it this morning. Things are working out. So I think we've got everybody back through there.
Richard, you know, he really works for us now.
Oh, let me tell you something. Richard Terry, I'm going to bring this up. We call him VP. Because when they come in and did the audit for Special Ed, they, with the expertise he has and how he can lay out budget information, and he can make it under, if he can make me understand it, anybody can, but he is our best practice. And we just thrilled to death, and we might even upgrade him to VP, Vice President before law.
He's a good one. Alright, thank you, Ms. Nadifer. Do you have anything else?
No.
Next item is to recognize Mr. Marlowe.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. We begin with the Financial District, period, in May 43rd. CAC trustees slightly over $5 billion. As I told you last month, you could expect a big regular resource of about $5 billion worth. You were roughly $10 billion dollars at the end of it.
Went away.
Giving it away. The two pages over, we'll see your revenue production through the end of May. 34.688 billion of 38.55 billion rent realized for a 90%. And if you look at the very top number on that page, you see a per car tax of 98.5%. So we only have 1.5% left, making the 100% down. It would be close. How many guests comes in something like that? Next page over, you'll see your appropriations of 89.5%. So, to the end of May, you're almost perfectly balanced. And then I have a full... Good sign. We would not spend more than we collected or planned. The Federal Projects School Fund is next. CAG, 428,197. That's using approximately $65,000, $60,000 of our $500,000. So, next page over, revenues and appropriations, 84.2 on revenues, 84.3 on appropriations. Should be in balance and ours. And then the final fund is the Central Cafeteria Fund. CAG, 160,000. Just to show you how the fund is on external resources. If you look down the page there, you'll see a equity balance, 815,000 for each quarter. That particular guy, $400,000 tied up in money yet to come that has been earned. So, big time money in the food service on a monthly draw kind of basis.
Big time, yeah.
That's one reason Vicky has to keep a pretty good CAG balance.
In arrears.
Last page over is the good news, as you know, I'm talking about this. Just a sense of surplus, which, you know, you've got 4 more months, it's very good to scale in relation to the other months. 96.9% of realization for the year revenue, 94.3 in appropriations. So that means revenues perform better than we originally planned for. And we were very cautious with the first year of the U.N. program to activity by out of Apple. But with the numbers that we did realize, we feel comfortable moving forward at 15, 16, 17, 18, so it's a very good project. I hope the federal government has the willingness to extend the beyond of our limits.
Alright. What's the pleasure? Let me get a motion first. A motion, a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright, anybody got any question for Mr. Marlowe? If not, cast your vote, please. Press confirm. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
Next item, we have one vote, and most of you are used to, under continued regulation, you can amend the vote. With the new state laws, that were adopted by the legislature this day, we have an automatic budget continuation now, as opposed to an actual provision. And also the part of that, you have the ability to amend this to the continuing budget that are actually effective upon the 15 system. So that benefits the school system as much as it does any of the other schools, because they are often having to notice of some kind of grant funds. And what we used to have to do is have to go out on a limb and say, alright, Director of Schools, we're pretty sure that the Commission will properly approve this, but you need to spend the money before September 30th. If we don't have a budget in plan, what are we going to do, you know? So a little bit of risk, even on a grant dollar. This process now allows that to not be there. And the Budget Committee said, well, in front of you, deal with just that kind of situation. It's a ESI grant from the state of Tennessee. And ESI, as you all know, is in the U.S. school division. And this grants about $46,000.
Wow.
45215. And specifically for Dackro Elementary School to have some package units replaced for HVAC and the program of all burnstabs and all of the rooms. And to remain in as interview edition in all the other schools that you want to take and where at least you'd be a much better place than we're at in our present. Another natural part, 100% grant funds.
That's great.
So this amendment anticipates the receipt of those by bringing them in to upstate grants, 45215, and appropriations for our contract services, 45215.
Is that because that school is below the rest of them as far as their energy efficiency? How did it get determined?
It's because it's one of the ones that when we did the big projects every year...
Got let down.
We couldn't achieve the savings associated with that for self-funding. And it was delayed with the thermite expedition grant fund.
Well, this is great. Yeah, this is great. What's the pleasure?
I make a motion, we accept it.
Got a motion. Do I have a second? Got a second? Anybody got any questions for Mr. Marlowe? Cast your vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote.
I have nothing on the item.
Okay. Next item, update from Fay Colmer. Ms. Fay? The account's all good?
Yes. Fay is incomplete. The school bookkeepers will be returning next week, June 22nd, I'm sorry, July 22nd, and they will close the school year out. Mr. Hill has scheduled the first week of August to complete this up for me for the audit. I have worked with the unit, but Wado, two separate days, on track, so that looks good also.
Who is the new bookkeeper at Wado?
Shannon Lamden.
Lamden.
It's extra, it's retired.
I got you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Fay? Thank you. Next item, items for action. Approve the Campbell County Schools Occupational Safety and Health Program Plan. I'll get a motion to approve and a second, and then if we got any questions, we'll direct those toward Mr. Bruce. You have a motion? A motion, do I have a second? Alright, any questions for Johnny? You want to come up and explain this?
Mr. Moore, a couple weeks ago, I received a letter from Mr. Tom Proraw, manager of the Public Sector Operations Division of Occupational Safety and Health. And he said that we updated or amended, it hasn't been updated since 2008. So we made a correction with the property's names in it, and we need to all pass it. Once it's passed, then we'll send the staff.
Okay. Just a protocol, pass it?
Yes.
Alright, anybody got any questions for Mr. Bruce? If you wouldn't, cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Mr. Collins? I'm sorry. Show us the vote. Alright.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to ask Johnny this one question. Are all of the schools having their drills and tests on a regular basis?
Yes, those are forms that they have to send in to the central office. And once we start that, then I'll be visiting each school to do retraining and go, like I said, any questions at that point, we're going to the school, we can address at that time.
Okay.
I usually take the EMS people with me, also the shirts department, and the fire service. If anybody has any questions, we'll answer at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, B, approve English Language Art Intervention and Mathematics Intervention for Campbell County High School and Jericho High School. What's the pleasure?
I still move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Cast your vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Next item, C, approve School Nutrition Program Handbook. I think Vicky, on the first page, there was a changes?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Now, questions? No questions, cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Thank you. Item D, discuss and take any necessary action on a 15, 16 school budget year. We had a workshop before this meeting. What's the pleasure?
I make a motion that we submitted as given to us.
Have a motion to submit as given. Do I have a second? Have a second? Any questions? Cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Thank you. Item E, we've added as addendum item, consider approving consolidated application for IDEA/ESEA for the 15, 16 school year. Mr. Nadifer, will you tell us what this is?
Yes, I'll refer that to Ms. Vicky Headley and Ms. Campbell. Go ahead, Ms. Headley.
Every year, we have to submit an application in order to accept the federal funding that comes in. And we have to decide that we're going to budget that, expend that money, and follow the federal guidelines to give back. All we're doing is discussing how we're going to do it. And this budget has been approved thus far.
Has been approved. Can I get a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Any questions for Ms. Headley? Or Ms. Campbell? Cast your vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Thank you. Item F, consider approving kindergarten as a full day of instruction. Mr. Nadifer?
After reviewing many of our surrounding counties, most kindergarten classes go the full day of school. And we, as a staff, feel that with the requirements and accountability coming down, that many of our students don't have the opportunity to get read to, to have extra instruction at home. And we just think that the extra hour in kindergarten will assist them in meeting requirements as they head on into the first and second grade to be more proficient in what they're doing and maybe be more successful as they enter those grade levels.
It doesn't cost any additional funding, right? No additional funding. What's the pleasure? What's the pleasure?
I make a motion, we approve it.
Got a motion? Second? Any discussion? He's wired, isn't he?
Yes.
Alright, anyone wish to approve? Cast your vote, please. Mr. Collins? Oh. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Next item, G, consider elimination of the K-2 assessment, formerly the SAT-10. I think some of our principals had concerns about that when we met with them. What's the pleasure? I make a motion, got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions for Mr. Nadifer regards to this item? Cast your vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Motion passed, thank you. Next item, legal matters. Mr. Cantrell?
I do have a matter in general, probably incident that we will discuss. Back in, gosh, February, March now, we had an executive session where we talked about the agreement that been made by Tennessee Guarantee Insurance Association as it relates to refunding workers' compensation claims from now to, well, number of these insurance companies. I sent y'all out a bad letter last week, it was just a combination of age and bit after surgeries that I had forgotten that Jeff was going to take that over to the County Commission. And such a rotating commission does not provide any additional funding for that. So it now comes back to you as to what direction you want to take. Back on April 18th, I had sent you out a letter where they had requested an additional $5,058.67, which was additional monies that had been paid on claims, bringing the total aggregate to 50,000, $773.58. One question that Ms. Headley had asked was probably the most perfect question throughout this was, is this a fixed number or could this number continue to grow? The answer is yes, it continued to grow. We see that it has actually grown by an additional $5,058.67 since they had originally made their proposal, which was probably around 15. This $5,058, they currently represented eight years' worth of medical payments or some combination of the three recipients or three employees. And refresh your regulation of what this is. If you have three employees that were covered, that's a longer insurance compensation interest. It went into the severship, basically, saying that they weren't going to provide, that they were just a non-solvent, in their term, the severship. Tennessee, like every state, with the exception of the state of Louisiana, is covered by a guarantee insurance act, meaning that when the insurance carrier that provides services, governmental entities, or private entities for that matter, goes to fund, there is a super fund made up of federal and state tax dollars that can pay those claims. Well, if you are an employer of a certain size, where you have a revenue stream of a certain amount, then you have to refund or pay back the state or the federal entity that is providing the services. Well, we had originally made a proposal to them that we don't have $25 billion worth of assets. Because technically, schools aren't really good for anybody but schools. And so we submitted a budget statement that was well under $25 billion threshold. They denied that, and what they're relying upon is case law from other states. All I provided to you are opinions from other Sixth Circuit opinions, both primarily in Michigan, Ohio, where federal courts have ruled that school buildings do count in that amount, that, you know, we're not exempt just because, you know, of our status. Well, there are no Tennessee decisions on this issue. It would be an issue of first impression in Tennessee. The Tennessee courts follow what the federal courts are in the other jurisdictions. They're going to, particularly within the Sixth Circuit, I think they're going to rule that we have $25 billion worth of assets that we're required to pay. What their offer is then, is that if you all will pay it without them having to go through the lawsuit, they're going to weigh all of their legal fees that they have incurred up to date, they're going to weigh any interest, they're going to allow you to make payments spread out over four years, interest fee, and they're just going to, basically, you're just going to pay the raw amount of the dollar that was paid, but none of the other costs. If we don't do this and challenge them where they'll file lawsuits, if we are not successful, then they'll be able to attach the prejudgment interest and the attorneys' fees, the costs of going through that. It's kind of what you want to... It's kind of what you want to do. It won't be a fast process if we go through the litigation. I would think to conclude the appeals process, you're probably looking at a minimum of two and a half years to probably maximum of four years to work its way through the system. Now, the negative is during that time, you're going to earn statutory interest and there's going to be attorney's fees to do an appeal. If we're not successful, they'll probably assess another $50,000 to $75,000 in legal costs on top of it. So, it's kind of your call. You would be paying right now roughly four equal payments.
Twelve thousand.
Divided by four, so you'd be roughly, what, seventeen, fifteen thousand?
Well, fifty thousand divided, fifty thousand seven hundred by four is twelve thousand six seventy five.
A year for the next four years. And then, any money that continues to go, they would just attach that to the end, you know, it's still let you pay it interest free and just add it. You know, I don't know, I'm not allowed by law to know the different relations of any of these clients. So, there's no way to me to tell you how long these payments can continue. They obviously suffer before they get sixty-five, as Medicare kicks in and then workers' comp can be over. We talked in private, I think a couple of them knew, some of them knew where it was. I don't anticipate there to be big ticket items, but you never know. The workers' comp laws, if they have to have a future surgery that's related to this, then that would be something that would come up. So, the decision that you all have to make is essentially, do you want to take the settlement that they offered, which would be paying $50,000 divided over four years, interest free and the no fees, or do you want to have them file a lawsuit against you and deal with it? Do they?
My question to Jeff is, where would those monies come from? But there is a cutoff date that they can no longer get that money, right? Coverage.
Sixty-five, yeah.
Okay.
Jeff?
So, your suggestion, Mr. Cantrell, is that we take the settlement? Is that your advice?
If you don't take the settlement, all you're doing is postponing the inevitable. And you're going to increase the amount and you lose the ability to pay it over four years. If they got a judgment against the system, then what they do is they would just go in and take the full amount out of your federal fund balance as a judgment. Now, I will say this, if you look at the $50,000, that's spread out over three people over several years. Even if they had another surgery, you don't have to pay the full amount of the surgery with the discounted workers' comp rate that they would pay. Workers' comp doesn't pay like Wood Cross or Shield pays. There's a set off. Is there cap? A doctor that is capped at what they can provide for certain services. So, this is just future medicals. It has nothing to do with disability money or money that goes to the person, it's just the future medicals. We tried to get them to cap it, and they got an opinion from the federal level that they were not allowed to cap it. These are brand new cases in Tennessee. They've just moved into Tennessee and they're starting to really crack down on late night and they were not allowed to cap it. That's in federal law, which does not provide for a cap.
Dale, when did they notify us of the new charges on the, for the patient?
Every April 16th. No, he said what he'll do is that the conclusion of a year, every year, they will send you what the new charges are, and then you can either adjust what you want to pay your share, or you can cap it on to add like another time to pay it, to extend out, to keep your cost down. They understand that this is a non-fee funded money. So, they were pretty cool about working with us on spreading it out over a period of time.
Calendar year basis, Dale?
The, you're all specific.
That makes it more difficult for us, only because.
You don't know.
You can't ever plan.
Yeah.
You won't know till somehow after.
That's the thing, I think, if you wanted to make the request back to say if you could give it to us by January 1st, I think they were.
Either by March 15th.
Third quarter.
If it runs through that prior calendar year, then we could be able to incorporate that information into the budget, but soon after 12/31.
I think they'll give, I think they will give you the date you want as a cutoff on the number. They were just trying to, to let it go as easy as you could to carry it to the next budget year.
I think if they would cut off every December and notify us what that is.
December 31st and then just do it in the calendar year, give it to us in January.
Well, it depends on the legislature on the top of the page for those. We need to know the advance of the number that you're going to hold them for the preceding time.
I think you're going to know that number, it's going to be a fourth of $50,000.
Not if, in fact, you have additional claims out.
They would pack that on to the end, like for next year's payment.
Next year. Once it starts, it'll be that sign on the one.
They were sensitive to that, and that's what they did. It wouldn't like become a minimum for it to be asked.
It doesn't matter.
And again, just for clarification, when we were in executive session, those folks are really close to that age, right? Or getting close.
My regulations is that I think one of the three had already aged out. And I don't think it was the.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But that the other two, I think one of them was still employed and seemed to be doing well. And then, there was only one that was still receiving some sort of therapy and had treatment.
Okay.
Another question, Dale. These charges that are made, are they itemized and sent to whom?
They will send them to whoever you want. That's one of the things he had put in the letter, was if you all reach an agreement to pay this, you could designate Jeff, you could designate Mr. Madoff, whoever you want. To every year, they would send them so that they would have them, you know, by appeal would be Jeff, because he's the most obvious choice, because he's the one who's going to be responsible for the judgment. You can know the value if he gets it.
Everybody good with that? All right.
You okay with that? Sure. Yeah, it's fine.
All right, so can I get a motion to approve our recommendation from our attorney to pay the initial $50,700 over the next four years? Got a motion, do I have a second? Got a second? Any questions? Everybody clear? If you would, cast your vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show us the vote. Mr. Madoff?
Mr. Chairman, I'm pulling a copy of the executed agreement for our final service basis for our payments, at least to the county.
What I was going to suggest, I'm going to get them to forward me two, because we have to have two originals, one to the federal level, one to the state level. I'll have them sent to the chairman for his signature with a self addressed envelope. After you sign it, they will have already signed it.
Give it.
And then, you can just provide Jeff to follow.
We will.
And I'll be in Jeff's, and I'll copy with all this information, Jeff. And then, we'll have them, I'll give the Jeff's contact information before we get there.
Thank you, Dale. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
While we're on legal matters, can you please tell us where we are on Mike Sharp?
I actually am going to court tomorrow. Everything is ready. It's just your new judge, Jeff Sammons, giving me a date to come in and do it. I'm coming up here tomorrow in her court, and I'm going to ask her, hey, when do you want the date to be heard? She dockets a little differently than y'all's previous judge did. He needs to just let us pick a date and we showed up. But it's docketed, it's ready for trial, and I'm going to ask her tomorrow what day to have the trial. And I doubt he comes, but I'll need, you know, Larry to show up on the trial date. We'll do it probably in this room. And I'll just, the day that it happens, I'll call you so you can just walk on, you know, leave the kill time during the day. But it's.
Okay.
Because he knows people at the court house. I know this is an odd thing.
Yeah, we just need to get that done. It's been going on too long.
Well, it's just costing you money. I mean, every day, he's going to have to pay an interest payment that goes with it. He can't bankrupt it, it makes no sense.
Okay, thank you. Recognize school board members. Mr. Collins?
I've got one item. I know the board approved $2,500 for each high school physician.
Yes, sir. Uh-huh.
Last week, I think last month, Mr. Goldrood, he's a physician, and he keeps all the stuff up here. Well, he had a break in there, and they stole over $10,000 for that stuff. Well, they stole over 300 bags of rulers, all this fishing law is quite heavy. So, he hasn't got any. And I know the board approved $3,500 for each school. But if they could see a bit, they have a better bit more, or the season just started, I appreciate it if you don't have any to anyway. It's a hard task.
You want to put it on there for next month?
Yeah, I'm going to tell him. He's a good man, that's fishing.
Yeah. It's a good program, yeah.
That's all I have.
Ms. Crystal? Mr. Bain?
No.
Ms. Bain?
Yes, a few things, and I apologize for my voice. But Jeff and Richard, thank you so much for all the hard work in central office for this budget. I know it takes a lot of time and effort and concern, I appreciate that. But Gatlinburg next weekend, I hope everybody plans to go. It's really, really important. There was over 200 bills that was related to education that passed in this year's spring's General Assembly. They'll be going over all those laws, and they'll also be going over the things that have come up since then. And then, good news is, and you probably saw it in the Knoxville News Sentinel yesterday, Senator Alexanders, he is the education chair in the National RIM. And he has pushed for the reauthorization of the ESL, ESEL Act for, I think I've got that right, it's Secondary and Elementary Reauthorization Act. But anyway, it is to do away with a lot of no child behind, which we have all been so concerned about for so many years. I've been to Washington at least 10 times, gone into their offices and sat down and said, we're asking for no-nonsense improvements. And now, it's on the rim of man change completely. It's been passed by the House in all of the committee hearings, and it's supposed to come before the Senate this week sometime. So, please, contact anybody you can think of to encourage them to do that. It's for the benefit of our education on every level. The other thing is, I was going to give a report tonight about our board retreat, but since my voice is so awful, I thought I'd spare you and do that next month. And our Fall District meeting, and please, I would get down on my knees and beg, please, let's be, at least six members go. It's going to be at Alcoa. High School has been changed. I told you before, it was Lenore City. But it's on September the 22nd.
22nd? What day of the week is that?
Thursday, maybe.
Okay.
It's Tuesday or Thursday, I'm not sure.
All right, thank you.
And before, I mentioned that Donnie Poston, hint, hint, Mr. Larry.
Van?
I rented a van, and we all got to ride together, so.
That was fun, yeah.
Okay.
All I think I have is I want to tell Mr. Madoff, I think that I really appreciate the last month and a half or so he's served. He's made some hard decisions that everyone's not agreed with. And I want to welcome the new staff members on to the central office team. And ask the board, we've got that thing scheduled for next Tuesday at 5:00. Sharon Marlowe wants to meet with the board through her collaborating group. And do you want to go ahead and have that meeting with her regardless, and maybe meet 30 minutes before that meeting? What is the pleasure? I need to tell her something.
So, meet her.
Maybe 4:30?
4:30.
Well, we may not have that meeting, but she wants, I think, you know, Ray, there are teachers, and she represents those teachers, and we need to see what her concerns are. Everybody good with that?
It's fine with me.
Sharon? Well, we'll just play it by ear. If we decide we won't, we'll reschedule it. Is that okay, Mr. Wallace? Okay. That's all I have. Sharon?
I will thank the state board for everything that she was the instrument in us meeting together. I'm sorry, all the board was not there to take advantage of. I think we learned the law. A lot of things I would like to know by September, I guess, as a board member, but I appreciate everyone who's kind of been there. And I would say, just just even while we were there, too, to give feedback for us. I thought it was excellent.
It was, Sharon, and next month, I will share, we all, we, all the members were asked to do a board evaluation of how you felt like our board was doing. And we got the results of that, and we'll make copies and pass out for the ones that did not get to come. So, we'll do that next month.
Mr. Goins? Okay, can I get a motion to recess? So, y'all recessed until Tuesday at 5:00 unless the Finance and Budget Committee approves our budget Thursday night. Galley, everybody know?